All right. Everybody good? All right. The time is six o'clock, and I'm calling to order a regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Sunset Valley, Texas for Tuesday, August 20th, 2024. And Council, just as a note before we get ahead into the agenda items, this is the first of three meetings that we'll have discussing the budget. Right now, we're scheduled for this week, next week, and then the week after that. If we need to, we can call additional work sessions or meet on the 17th, but we'll have some council members unavailable attend some of those sessions. So I'd like to try to get it done in the next three weeks, our next three meetings. But with that, we're going to go ahead and move into our first agenda item, which is public comments. So if there are members of the public that wish to speak at this time, please step up to the podium and state your name and address the council.
The mic's on tonight. My name's Danny Horrigan. They want to get started off key. So let's see. Injury and damages resulting from judgment or action of another in disregard of one's rights determine detriment to one's legal rights or claims. An adverse opinion or leaning formed without just grounds or before sufficient knowledge, sufficient knowledge, excuse me. An irrational attitude or hostility directed against an individual or group, race, or their supposed characteristics. And that is the definition to prejudice. He raises up kings and he also brings them down. He provides both intelligence and discernment. So I'm running for governor of the state of Texas. I live at the Military Discount House of Prayer off Three Pillow Road in Sunset Valley, Texas, and I feel as if my rights have been attacked since day one with welfare checks on me when I call about my neighbor. Not that I wanted to call about the neighbor, it's just that she was very unruly to this society here. So thank you for your time. I hope you have a good night. And I've come to most all my neighbors and asked them to help me in some which way or the other, and they refused or were just too busy and didn't have the time. So shame. Thank you and good night. Have a great evening, folks.
Thank you. If this MBL switches to speak, step out of the podium at this time. All right. We're going to move on to agenda item number three, which is consider an act on approval of the minutes from the August 6, 2024 regular meeting. Councilmember Burrow.
Make a motion to approve the minutes from the August 6, 2024 regular meeting.
There's a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Well, second.
Second from Councilmember Johnson. Any discussion on this before we go to a vote? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. All right, we approve the minutes from the August 6, 2024 regular meeting. And that'll take us to our next agenda item, which is presentation and possible action to approve the negotiation execution of an interlocal agreement between the City of Sunset Valley and the City of Austin for fire protection services for a period of five years with an initial amount of $594,293, $39 and increasing 1% for each year of the five-year term. And I'll hand it over to city staff for an introduction to this item.
Thank you. Good evening, mayor and council. We are pleased to present this item to you. We've been working with Austin Fire Department and renegotiating the five-year interlocal agreement over the past couple of months. We're also pleased to have representatives from Austin Fire Department here this evening with us. They will be introducing themselves later and making a brief presentation briefly to review this item. The scope of services of the Austin Fire Department under the interlocal agreement provides firefighting, EMS, first response, and other emergency services within Sunset Valley and its ETJ 24/7. Their response time goals aim for arrival within eight minutes, 90% of the time. And that, you know, per the interlocal agreement, AFD will coordinate it with Sunset Valley's municipal departments and comply with all relevant regulatory requirements. One change or one difference in this iteration of the interlocal agreement I wanted to highlight were something that was worked out between city staff, including Jerry and myself, with the Austin Fire Department and the Fire Marshal's office regarding development applications. So these are primarily chiefly applications from our business, businesses and commercial centers for either, you know, remodels or new installs of fire alarms, fire alarm systems, fire sprinkler systems. So applicants will now submit those plans directly to Austin Fire Department and will pay AFD directly for plan review and inspection fees. And the city will still be kept in the loop. Sunset Valley will still be kept in the loop for the development process, but we will no longer be acting as the middleman handling the application. So the applicants will now submit directly to Austin. Additionally, in Exhibit A of the ILA that you all received, there's a description of annual supplemental services that are at the City of Sunset Valley's disposal from AFD. There's a total of 500 hours the city can utilize annually, included but not limited to special event consultation, wildfire protection planning, water rescue planning, hazmat recognition training, or just some of the potential supplemental services that AFD can provide. And again, they're here. If you have any questions regarding those, they'll be, they'll be happy to answer your questions. Again, for the funding, I think we're all very pleased with the agreement. It did not go up very much from fiscal year '24. So as the mayor read earlier with the agenda item, the baseline of the agreement is $594,239. That includes that supplemental service fee of $25,000. And the contract will increase 1% each year excluding the $25,000 supplemental service fee. That remains constant for the five-year agreement. That's all that I have, and I'm happy now to turn it over to Ronell Paulson with Austin Fire Department.
Good evening. I'm Ronell Paulson, and I'm the Assistant Director at the Fire Department, the Austin Fire Department. I'll let my coworkers, my, they're going to introduce themselves first, and then I'll go over the presentation.
Mayor, council, on behalf of the Fire Department Chief Baker sends his greetings. My name is Rob Byers, and I'm the Chief of Staff, and it's our pleasure to be here to visit with you all. Thank you.
And I'm Stephen Trustel. I'm the Fire Marshal.
And a few words. All right. As the Assistant Director, I'm responsible for things like finance and HR and contracts. So we have done this negotiation. We only get the chance to come visit with you like every five years, and I remember some of you from the last time I was here. But we wanted to provide you with just some basic information to supplement your decision about moving on, you know, moving forward with the contract. The first page of your handout in our presentation describes the southern edge of our service area. You can see that that sort of brownish area is Sunset Valley, and you kind of get your bearings from there. The stations that are nearest to you are 27, 29, 20, and 17. And then a little further out from there, there are brush trucks assigned, which are good in your case because they could come in and take care of, of issues in the, in your green belt area. That gives you a sense of what type of resources are available at those nearby stations if you look at the legend down below. The second page just describes all of the types of things that we're providing. It is, it is a broad range of, of services that we provide to the, to the City of Austin, and you have access to. When it comes to things like fires, when you call 911, it's going to directly come to us. There's structure fires, but there's also grass fires, wildfires, and we have the types of capabilities to address those more specific types of fires. More importantly, knowing, knowing this area, you've got a lot of collisions with the access road and other main thoroughfares. With those collisions, we've got the rescue tools to rest, to get people out of crushed up vehicles. We can provide that medical attention that's needed to be done quickly. We partner with EMS on all medical events, but, but having those tools and having that triage, being able to get here very quickly are important in those, in those moments. We can address vehicle fires. We've had a sort of resurgence with regard to training on vehicle fires with regard to Tesla being nearby and, and dealing with the battery up, you know, the electronic, not electronic, electric vehicles is what I'm looking for. So vehicle fires have taken a new, new meaning for us. And then we use fire trucks to block traffic so that you don't have additional crashes, additional collisions with people not paying attention and running into the existing collision. So that big old fire truck will sit there and make sure things are safe for everybody else. We know, we have a group that specializes in hazardous materials, both the permitting of hazardous materials, but more importantly, the identification of the materials that go into everything from just the fertilizer used in somebody's yard, to what if somebody's accumulating the sorts of things that would go into bomb making. So they have the equipment to identify that, to analyze it quickly and assess what's going on. They are also, according to this contract, available to help with the handover. You would need to pay for hazmat cleanup, but they would be there and, and help make sure things are safe, safe until you could hand that over to a contractor to take care of the cleanup. All right. Chief Trustel with the Fire Marshal's Office is responsible for all that stuff with permitting and code inspections. And as you heard, we needed to negotiate some updates to that, to make that process go a little smoother. But in general, they do a lot of inspections for fire prevention. In your commercial buildings, they're coming in and looking at the fire protection systems, making sure that they work and that they're permitted properly. With development plans, like the new development you have just, just down the road here, they're making sure that it's built properly and it's got the right permits to open. And then an area that we wanted, we talked about quite a bit and want to explore more are your special events, your, your big event with music and, and larger crowds. Being able to come in and, and make sure that if you've got a lot of food trucks and stuff, that the, the, the tanks, the, what do we call it? The propane tanks are all safe and that you've got them a certain distance from other flammables, all of those kinds of things that we can help with in terms of, of consulting on those events. Then finally, the, the additional hours would go towards planning and training, and it was already read to you the sorts of things we can help with. I think wildfire protection and building a wildfire protection plan, being a part of the county's larger wildfire system would be beneficial to all of us, to you all here with your open spaces and to the rest of the county, because we know those things tend to spread and jump as they travel down, down green belts and those sorts of things. Terms of some statistics for you, you can see where the number of cases are estimated to increase, the number of instances. On the total number of emergency instances, that jump for this year has something to do with the classification of calls that you might want to be aware of. The EMS is, been hurting for, for staffing the same way that we are, but they have reclassified some calls so that we're now going to help on some lower level calls that we didn't used to help with, and that's adding to the numbers that you see in '24. If you turn the, turn the page, and it's my understanding, the reason the number of calls hasn't adjusted like it has in the rest of the city and grown tremendously is that you're kind of landlocked in that you're not doing a whole lot of new development. So that would explain the almost steady across. And then in 2020, 2022, we've got the COVID pandemic that kept a lot of people inside. So that would explain some of that. In terms of just pulling the top five problem types for emergency incidents here in Sunset Valley, you can see in 2019, it was fire alarms and pretty much all the way down through fire alarms, which would be a fire system going off and saying that we're detecting a fire. Those are, or somebody calling in and saying, I've got a fire. Those are your, your main number of calls, the highest number of calls. Traffic, traffic accidents, traffic injuries are the second largest numbers. You can see things, let me just define what these others are. Altern mentation is when someone is having trouble being coherent, and that could be anything from, from someone who's had too much heat and they're, they're getting, you know, a little bit off that way to, to someone who's without housing, who's been out in the heat too much or just been outside too much, or, or any kind of situation. We've been answering more of those calls. You can see that it's up to 15 estimated in '24. Then we've gotten more specificity with regard to chest pain calls, seizure calls that you see in the more recent years that weren't in the earlier years. They might have been rolled into medical calls before. Now we can pull them out as a more specific call type. And then finally, that lift assist is when someone has fallen or for whatever reason is down on the ground and cannot get up, and they're using the phone to call for somebody to help them get up and move to some other place in their home or has fallen in public and needs to get up. Did I miss anything on those?
You did a good job.
Good? Okay. Finally, the last page here describes a lot of the same things that Matt described to you. It's a 1% increase per year in the cost for services. It's a $25,000 per year for approximately 500, 500 hours of training and/or consultation. The city doesn't get to make any kind of profit on these kinds of agreements, and we have agreements with more than just the City of Sunset Valley. We have agreements with Shady Hollow, with EST4, which is a series of islands of, of properties in the county. And we are expected to charge for the, the cost for service to be equal to the amount that we're paying to provide those services. And so we kind of back into these agreements by looking at how many calls, how much time we spend. All of those sorts of, of factors go into it to create these agreements. The, the way we've calculated it is not different than your previous contract with us. The cost per year is, is written out here, and then just to show you that in the past we were increasing 3%, the city was growing a lot faster. I think you were growing still with regard to adding, adding things. Things have slowed down, and we're able now to, to focus a little bit. We needed one last little boost there from '23 to '24. Our contracts for what we pay the firefighters, the negotiated collective bargaining agreement gave them a raise, and we needed to kind of get in the right place to pay for that raise. But, but what we foresee into the future is it only being a 1% increase. Okay? We are here and ready for any questions you might have.
Thank you so much. Council, do you have any questions? Councilmember Rosengard.
Do you have a couple of stories you might share regarding the, the electric vehicles now out on the road?
Yes, I can talk about that. We've experienced a few fires with them, and the fire service as a whole is starting to adapt. You know, we, we were used for so many years to putting out so many fires like that with water, and that, that doesn't work so well. So what we're starting to get is actually a blanket. It's a big blanket that you just cover the vehicle up and basically smother it. I don't know if you followed that trend much, but people didn't know what to do at first. And sometimes they were actually, if they were close to a body of water, they were picking up the burning vehicle with a crane and just submerging it in the water, which is a bad idea because those batteries have a lot of chemicals that they put off. So now our focus is more on smothering the fire and then also not using a lot of water because we want to minimize the amount of runoff from those fires because of the, again, the chemicals that are produced in those fires.
So you're saying even when you use a blanket, that there's a lot of chemical waste left behind?
There is, but it's usually contained to that one little area as long as you don't use a lot of water, and it'll, it'll stay in that area, and you may have to dig up the soil where that fire burned out, but it's much easier to contain when you're able to just smother it in place.
Thank you.
Councilmember Burrow.
Thank you. I have a question concerning the pragmatics of responses. So the responses that the estimated 150, are do those, is Sunset Valley serviced by a single fire station, the closest one, or can you comment on how, how that works?
So yeah, it's always going to be the closest unit, and it's based off the GPS location of our stations, which is in, in, well, it's been quite a while ago now, but it used to always assume that the fire truck was in the station because we didn't know exactly where it was. But with the better technology, we use GPS location and on top of that, it actually accounts for the turnout time. So if you have one station, station, one unit stationary in the station, it's going to be downgraded versus a truck rolling down the road. So the truck rolling down the road already moving, maybe a little bit further away, but the computer tries to account for that. And then also, what, one thing that has improved a lot, which is important here with all your different, your different intersections, is the routing and, and the computer knowing which route the fire trucks are going to take and account for that in the response time. And so you're going to get, you know, on a medical, just one unit of collision, two units, but then as the call types change, you're going to get multiple units responding all at once for an incident.
One other item not very well displayed on that map is where you're, the big arrow that says Sunset Valley on it. Right behind it, about where the L's are, is a station we opened, brand new station just a couple of years ago, station number 51. It's Monterey Oaks and 290 roughly as far as location. So that's one extra unit that's a station that's available to service your area. That way, if other ones are out and about, that's another layer of, of coverage to make sure someone gets y'all's needs in a timely manner.
Hurts for you to remind us that we lost that station.
Apologize, didn't mean to open any work.
Councilmember Johnson.
Hello. The 500 hours of training, maybe this is for Chief Carter, have we been using, we've had this available to us? This is a new thing. This is awesome. 500 hours is a lot. Do we have an idea of how we would use this? Right off the, I mean, you probably have not really looked at this much, but.
Not, not yet, we haven't. We'll see whenever they start putting out training flyers and things like that, but we won't use 500 hours.
No, no.
And, and let me add, the way that's costed is if we send two or four people, that's, that's four hours.
Yeah, sure.
As they're standing there. So it gets used up faster than you'd think.
Yeah.
If they come in for a community meeting to talk about wildfires or something, we could send six people. And have a good, good showing that way.
And so community events could also be part of that. Okay, awesome. And then you, you guys run 911? Because it always says like Travis, every time I see it in the news, it's like Travis County runs 911 service, but.
Well, so there is the CTEC, the Combined Telecommunications and Emergency Communication Center. And so it's all the different agencies are represented there. The calls come in to 911 and then they're, in our system, they're handled initially by APD and then they're handed off depending on what you ask for. If it's fire, we get all the fire calls for the whole county. So there's not a delay trying to figure out which department. And so if you EMS, it's always going to go to Austin Travis County EMS and so forth. But then, you know, sometimes the callers are not super clear on what they need and it's real easy for then the dispatchers to then dispatch the appropriate agency if there was any, you know, misunderstanding in the beginning of the call. But it is a big facility. It houses not only the emergency services, but also TechDOT, CapMetro. And so they're all in the same location.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilor Medicas.
So on the 25,000 per year, that 500 hours, doesn't that include the permitting going directly? Or is that not part of that? That's on top of that?
No, that's, I mean, that is just the, the development permits just go directly to the Austin, Austin Fire Department. This is a separate.
Oh, that's different from that.
Correct, correct. That's, yeah, that's not considered the supplemental services. Now, if, if the city needs assistance with, let's say like event, you know, I believe, we were discussing during the presentation, like assistance with special events, like for example, Art Fest. If we wanted some consultation on, you know, safety, you know, ways we could make Art Fest, you know, safer, that would be where the supplemental services would kick in, something outside the scope of just them handling normal development permits.
Example of that might be if you've got enough people in one place at the same time and you've, let's say you decide to get crazy and do fireworks or something, having a fire truck parked there so that there's no response time, they're just right there, there would be a charge for that and it would, it would follow the same kind of permitting charges. It's not a permit, what is that?
It's a, it's the fee schedule.
If, is there a fee schedule that's published for the city?
Under the, it's called an, in, in the city, we call it an ACE permit, the Austin Center for Events, excuse me. And then we would handle those similarly. And so we're going to build a form side application. So if someone in Sunset Valley wants to apply to have a special event, they don't go through the full city of Austin, they would go through a streamlined process. And we would discuss what those trigger points would be, you know, maybe it'd be a certain amount of people. If they came here to City Hall and said, we want to do this, then you could, you know, very simply refer them to our website to start that process. And then we would do our review for fire safety. And then if it became more complicated, we have, you know, even to the point, if you have a very large event with a lot of propane, as Dr. Paulson said, we have a hazmat engineer that can come out and inspect those, whether it's cooking facilities or whatever, to make sure they're safe.
We actually have had you involved in Art of Fire we did a couple of years ago where we had a special event thing where people looked like they were running out of a fire building. So it was all, yeah, so you guys were part of that. So, so when you do like the inspections on a festival, like you, you inspect the propane tanks, that's part of what you normally do, yeah? Because you guys came and inspected the food truck tanks.
We do that, so the food trucks are permitted, you know, countywide and, and sometimes they will come in from out of town. So that's where we will make sure that they have the, those appropriate permits. And then we also have the, what we call a sensor, it's a, a gas sensor, so we can double check the fittings and stuff, just to make sure that nothing's come loose during transport, to make sure that everything's safe.
The only other question I had was on the lift assist, when, when some, I have a neighbor whose husband falls a lot and she calls for assistance, is that, do they pay for that or is that just included in the service? That's a great service. Thank you.
Any additional questions from counsel? Anybody ready to make a motion? Councilor Medicas.
I can't see with that sun coming in.
Oh, yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve the negotiation and execution of the interlocal agreement between the city of Sunset Valley and the city of Austin for fire protection services for a period of five years with an initial amount of 594, 239, and increasing 1% for each year of the five-year term.
Motion, is there a second for that?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, motion passes. Yes, and thank you very much for coming out and really appreciate the service you provide for the city.
Thank you. And, and this will go before the city of Austin council, I believe, next. A week from Thursday.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Grab some cookies on your way out. All right. Counsel, we're going to move on to our final agenda item. It's the presentation only item, so this is not going to be taking any action. We're going to go through the budget presentation, including the PowerPoint that the city staff and I prepared to introduce to the budget. So this is going to be the discussion of the mayor's budget for fiscal year 2024, 2025. And then we're going to go into the details as noted below, the budget overview, the organization chart and personnel items, utility rates and capital projects. With that, I will hand it over to Matt for bringing up the overview and we'll get underway.
Thank you, Mayor and Counsel. Thank you to staff who has been a part of this budget, budget process. Thank you to the Budget and Finance Committee for having all, all those meetings over the summer to discuss and review the budget and make recommendations. So overall, I think the budget process went really well this year. And thank you to counsel. It was so much easier working within the new ERP software, creating the, the budget sheet. So thank you very much for, for moving forward with the, the new, the new financial software. Again, this is our projected ending fund balances, so where we are projecting to, to end the year, which is really, I believe, these were the fund balances as of beginning of August, correct? Yeah, so beginning of August. So obviously we will receive, you know, two more months of revenue, but we will also have two more months of expenses. But overall, this gives you a snapshot of where we are right now with the fund balances. As you can see, the general fund, which I'm going to go into the next slide, break down what those different, you know, reserve, committed, non-committed and restricted. So this is an updated snapshot. So the reserve, the general fund reserve, which according to our current financial policies, has to be a 12-month operating reserve based on the five-year average of general fund revenue. And we kind of added a keyword meaning external, not, not counting transfers in from fund balance or from other funds, but external revenues actually received. So the current reserve based on that five-year average is 5.95 million. If, you know, there was a discussion, I believe Councilmember Rosengard, you know, discussed the possibility, if the city moved to an, back to an 18-month operating reserve, that would mean the, the general fund reserve would need to be at 8.9 million. Of the committed general funds, we've got 1.4 million. And again, this is where we're predicting to, projecting to end the year at. So for city beautification, parks and open space, this was the special revenue fund that was created, I want to say back in FY21, or FY22, around the time we were beginning the, the parks and open space planning discussion. So that current balance is 517,466. So these funds could be utilized for project, for projects in FY25, including, I think eligible projects could be the Savannah Trail, it could be the city hall backyard. So that, all that would do really is draw down that committed fund balance and, you know, versus drawing down from the non-committed. The water conservation rebate program, we've used a little bit of it, about, you know, 25,000, just under $25,000 in FY24. So adding an additional 100,000 in the FY25 budget leaves 873,000 approximately in that, in that fund. And then there's additionally, there's American Rescue Act funds. So these are funds that city received as a part of the American Rescue Act during, to, to assist with coming out of the pandemic. And so we did utilize about 8,000, $9,000 of that this year to have the mural designed and that should be installed pretty soon down at, not mural, excuse me, mosaic installed at Jones and Westgate. But these are leftover funds that could be used. I believe we have a proposal of possibly using those for trail sign rebranding. Restricted general funds, the HRA funds, 13,316. We shouldn't, we really shouldn't need to be using those funds anymore with our new, if, if curative works out like we're, we're thinking so. But in discussing with the finance manager, we recommend just leaving those funds in, in that line item, you know, in case curative doesn't work out and we go back to needing to utilize that subsidy again. Then there's LEOC funds and opioid funds. These are both public safety related funds. Chief can probably speak more to the, the LEOC funds, but those are essentially law enforcement training or. From the state, yes. And then the opioid funds was from a, again, from federal funds received and those can only be used on any sort of mitigation of the opioid epidemic. This is a refresher, I believe this was in the last presentation we did way back in May, but here's our kind of five-year fund balance historical, gives you just a snapshot. If you look all the way over to the right, it just shows you the city's fund balance, total fund balances across all funds for the last five years. One thing we did, the, the mayor, in discussing with the mayor, was Kyle did some research going all the way back to FY9, looking at the city's finances, you know, going back 15 years. And you can see, you know, just subtly over time, I think Kyle and I, the city makes about $2 million a year, rough, roughly. I mean, obviously during the city facility, when we were building the city facilities, it remained pretty flat as we were, you know, spending a lot of money to construct the new facilities. But then post-city facilities during the pandemic, when we, you know, shut a lot of services and projects down, we rebounded. So just gives you a nice snapshot. Sales tax revenue, so again, this, that second to last column is the actual revenue we've received, but it doesn't include that final month of September revenue. Overall, we're at 2.7% above the, what we projected to receive in sales tax, but we are 5% below what we've received from fiscal year 2023. So the budget is, the mayor's proposed budget, the mayor went along with Budget and Finance Committee recommendation of reducing budgeted sales tax by 2%. So for the FY25 proposed budget, we have overall external revenue of 10.3 million, the bulk of that, of course, being sales tax. There's also utility sales, interest revenue, which is also high given the interest rates right now and that the city's money is, is in Tex Bull earning a very good interest rate. But interest rates may also be cut, I believe, if that is meeting next month. There's general consensus that they may, they may cut interest rates. So we may just want to keep an eye on interest revenue, but we're also hopeful that sales tax revenue will, you know, we're estimating conservative, but we're hopeful with some of the shopping centers being full, raising canes and some other stores opening that will actually, you know, hopefully beat the, the budget for our sales tax revenue. For operating expenses, we've got about 8.3 million in operating expenses. This is not including transfers. Transfers would be, you know, transfers to other funds or like the utility operational subsidy or the utility infrastructure transfer. So that 8.3 million does not include that. And you can see the breakdown there, about 3.8 million is, or about 3.9 million is salaries, benefits and other compensation. We've got then contractual services, and I've broken it out, you've got the wholesale utility expenses with Austin Water and Wastewater and our TDS contract, fire and emergency services, which we just discussed, other contractual services, everything from IT services, attorney, engineering, other, other contractual services for Public Works landscaping is about 1 million. And then we've got about half a million in community programs and other operating expenses of 1 million. So our, that was our operating budget. This is the proposed capital budget. And the revenue and the expenses are the same that you, you know, they equal out. And of that 7.7 million dollars in revenue, 3 million is a transfer in from fund balance, meaning you're pulling from the CIP funds either projects that had a budget this year or from previous years. And then the other transfers, the 4.6 million are transfers in from other funds, general fund, street fund, venue fund, two fund, the correlating projects. And so I'll get into more detail on the, what those capital projects are later, but basically we have 5.4 million of carryover projects, 1.9 million or just under 2 million of new, new proposed projects, and then capital outlay slash repair and replacement items of 386,000. This is all fund detail. Items to highlight, just as a reminder, with the utility fund, we merged the drainage, formerly drainage fund, now it is just the drainage utility department within the utility fund. Crime control is the only fund that is operating at a deficit, but the deficit will draw down from the fund balance. I think it still leaves a, a fund balance of 74,000, which is roughly the target that at the last couple of budgets, counsel wanted to keep the crime control fund at. And again, just as a reminder, Fund 30, which is, was the CIP fund, we renamed it the Capital Improvement Slash Replacement Fund. So that is where capital expenditures are budgeted, including CIP projects and including repair and replacement and purchasing new equipment. For example, one piece, one new piece of equipment this year that Public Works requested, Budget and Finance Committee recommended is a slope mower. So a mower that is designed for safely mowing slopes like at the berms at the, at the dam. And so this is where we're projecting to end our fund balances. You'll see that it is quite a big drop from where, where we potentially start the year, but as I tried to, I've been trying to remind everyone, that CIP balance that built up of 3 million, that $3 million was allocated to be spent on projects that either in, either this year or in previous years. So you can see the, the CIP balance has, has greatly reduced to, you know, just over 600,000. And so any, and however, data also shows, if you look at our previous years, we, we rarely spend even close to what we project we're going to spend in, in the CIP fund. As we all know, projects move, moves quite slowly. So I really do not expect us to spend the full $7 million in FY25. The one good point is of, of making that $500,000 transfer to the utility fund for the infrastructure is our utility fund is ending at a, at a, at a higher balance, which is what we want to see. We want to make sure that we're investing for future infrastructure and utility projects. So we wanted to highlight some key differences from the Budget and Finance Committee recommendations versus what was filed in the mayor's budget. So a lot of it, the, the large number of differences are the, those carryover projects, which we'll be, I'll be discussing in detail later. So that's the combined CIP project that we, council awarded the bid for last meeting, the Stearns Waterline Project. The mayor did fund a task order with MEND for the development of a schematic design in the uplands. And we can talk more about that, but we propose utilizing what was titled restricted funds. However, I think that's a misnomer. It really was committed funds for Burger Center Loop Trail Project. So the, in the mayor's budget, there are also the proposed rate changes that are on the website that went on the utility bills for water, wastewater, solid waste. Budget and Finance Committee did not recommend making any changes to the water and wastewater rates and only increasing the solid waste. So salary benefits and other compensation, Budget and Finance saw a, a salary adjustment. Budget and Finance saw a, a salary adjustment pool of about a hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars. That is now, in the mayor's budget, that has now been reallocated based on position budgeting. So what, what employees will actually make beginning October first, including their, if they received a COLA or if they received a salary adjustment based on the, on the results of the salary survey and those changing pay ranges. Additionally, in the budget is, are the actual numbers for what benefits will cost, including the, the new, the new medical benefits, which thankfully only went up just under four percent rather than the ten percent or higher we were expecting. Additional items, the mayor funded the SFC and Daisy-Dash Hot Fund Grant Request. There was an error and we just missed Daisy Dash presenting to the, they did get their application in on time. We just, staff just missed it. So they weren't able to present to Budget Finance, but it's the same amount, five thousand, very small amount as, as been awarded the previous couple of years. And then SFC, they, they did get their application in on time as well. However, they were late on their current FY24 grant reporting. They're now fully caught up with their grant reporting. However, they did request, they did request eight thousand more than they requested last year. And so I had a meeting with them about it. We talked over a few things. They would like to come to council next week and make a presentation to talk about potentially, you know, receiving those grant funds. So that's something we can talk about, potentially putting them on the agenda. But I think they also have some good data they'd like to share about how the market is, is growing. So that may be an agenda item for next week as a, as a presentation and discussion with SFC about their, about their grant request. And then also, the attorney fees increased from our city attorney, city attorney firm. However, so I had, in, in the FY25 budget, I had, and the one that Budget and Finance saw, I had reduced the attorney line item. But due to the fee increase, now it's just, in the mayor's budget, it's just flat. So that is another difference between what Budget and Finance saw or recommended and what was proposed. So personnel items. So there are, so staff is proposing, and I am proposing for FY25, a new full-time position for the admin department, admin department only, fully funded by admin. And this, the, the title is just Administrative Assistant. It is a direct report to the city secretary. And this position is, which was in your backup, would be cross-trained in both the municipal court and Development Services and just other general administrative tasks for the city. There is also the Communications and Engagement Coordinator position. That position is, is not in the mayor's budget or there's a, there's only one, there is one FTE in the, in the mayor's budget, and it's funded at the same rate as the Communications and Engagement Coordinator. However, that exists, existing position, as you all know, is currently vacated. So there is an opportunity to update the job description if we want to keep it to meet the city's current need. A potential new title for that position would be Communications and Event Coordinator. So myself, the mayor, council member Metekis, the current event coordinator for Art Fest, Michelle Golden, and the chair and vice chair of the Arts Commission met last week just to discuss Art Fest and the needs of Art Fest and event coordination. And so there's, I think there's some discussions to be had regarding those needs. Two other things just to keep in mind as we discuss personnel needs for the admin department. There was a line item that was funded this year for fifty thousand dollars for administrative interns. Originally, that was meant to hire interns that were qualified in, in preparing the city's inventories to be scanned. In, in getting into that project, we realized that that really needs to be handled by staff on site. The city secretary has received some training from TSLAC. But we were using that line item for admin interns. I'm sure, an intern for Development Services, an intern for Municipal Court. So depending on what positions get funded, there would, you know, and with a full-time administrative assistant, we would not need administrative interns for forty thousand dollars. So, and then also the current Art Fest Event Coordinator's contract is for forty thousand dollars. And she, Michelle Golden, who is the current coordinator, is planning on retiring. So she is, she is phasing out from that, that position. All right, so moving over to capital projects. Do we want to, do we want to take a break and talk or do we want to go through?
Let's go through the presentation and then we'll start getting questions and go through everything.
Yeah. All right. So we've separated these out. So there are carryover capital projects, meaning projects that were either funded this year or in prior, prior fiscal years that we want to complete. And then there are new proposed projects. So these are projects that have bids awarded or, or council approval. So there's the Combined Twenty-Four Project, which was awarded at our last meeting, which includes the Savannah Trail, Phase One of Upper Cougar Creek, and the Ernest Rovels Way Bridge and Street Repairs. And you can see the breakdown there, the four-point-two million. And we already have identified some potential change orders to reduce the price of both the Savannah Trail and the ERW work. And we need, you know, continued discussion on the items, several items, including the, you know, do we go with the traditional concrete trail throughout the park? Or do we use the impervious, impervious concrete? So there's what will be, there's an area we will be seeking council direction. There's the Oakdale Brody Waterline. This is the water line that feeds the Leona Development. That is a utility fund project, so we need to carry that over. We are currently waiting on the city of Austin. We had a, I hope a beneficial meeting with them this week. Last week, we cleared their utility commission, so we, we, the water line's actually, I believe, having to shift a little bit due to the gas line Carolyn can. So it was good we had that coordination meeting with all the utility companies. But we are still waiting on, again, the water line goes through the city of Austin's right-of-way, you know, encroaches on the sidewalk and the public right-of-way. So we're most likely looking at having to get a inter-local agreement for that encroachment. But once we have that squared away, then we can move forward with Smith constructing that water line. There's the Phase Two of the Love Grass Water Quality Pond Repairs. And there's, so we want to carry over those funds to make those repairs. We have a contractor already on standby that can, that can do that work. So these are carryover capital projects, meaning they were funded in a, in a prior year, either this year or, or prior, that do, that do not have a bid award. There's the improvements on Country White Lane, both the water line and the turnaround. And then there's a water line over on Sterns Lane. Potentially, we've been in discussion with the engineers and then potentially in discussions with Smith. These could be projects that are change ordered into the combined project, the four-point-two-million-dollar project. Because remember, you can adjust twenty-five percent. So you can go twenty-five percent down, you can go twenty-five percent up. So hopefully, we, we, again, we've identified some cost savings that would bring that four-point-two-million dollars down for the work on Upper Cougar Creek and the work on Ernest Rovels Way. But maybe while we have this large amount of a, of a contract of a bid awarded, four-point-two million, we can make some of these other improvements. So Country White Lane and on Sterns Lane. Because these are important projects. Both are, we're under contractual obligation from the city of Austin to, to construct these water lines. I believe there's, you know, we've, we've already approved the turnaround on Country White Lane. And in addition, just as an update, so the town bridge development is, is definitely on hold. I believe, yes, today their, their watershed development permit expired. So, yeah, so, because we were going to do a, a cost sharing or cost participation agreement with them. All right. And you all are probably familiar with a lot of these. These are the new capital projects that are proposed. I think all, again, all of these were approved by Budget and Finance, except for the uplift schematic design. So the Brody Lane Mill and Overlay, million doll, you know, expensive project, but a, a, once the bid is awarded, it is a, a quick, a quick project, yes. And, and again, the plan is to do that overnight to have a minimal impact to our main thoroughfare. The Brody Lane hazmat traps, cleaning those, replacing lids. I think we're looking at options of, of improving those lids and access so that we would potentially not have to. Yes, clean them better. The City Hall backyard construction. So the, in the mayor's budget, the Budget and Finance Committee recommended a fifteen percent reduction, which the mayor put in his budget. Carolyn identified some areas, so we brought that cost down to four, four-hundred-and-seventy-seven-thousand. And then the Reimagine Brody Conceptual Design for one-hundred-and-six-thousand, that's the street fund, and thirty percent design of Phase One A. And then the Upland Schematic Design of thirty-nine-thousand, two-hundred-and-eighty-two. And again, we're looking at, we're proposing utilizing those funds that were allocated to the Burger Center Loop Trail. Those were funds donated by the PGA. Utility rates. Hope you all were able to look at the website that Carolyn worked on, which really just, I think, encompassed all, the many work sessions that we've had and the, the plan that we've put together. And these were kind of the main, the main changes to the rates. And they're not exactly, well, yeah, they, I would say that staff is recommending, these are like most important to least important, except that, that's one through seven. We definitely want to create a community assistance program to assist with, to assist lower fixed income residents as we implement these proposed changes. So I, I won't go through all of them, but if you have any questions, again, we can discuss that. Bring-back items. So these are items that we've identified in discussing with Chief. We do need to add an additional twenty-six-thousand, five-hundred in operating expenses for PD. These would all be in the Crime Control Fund. So seventeen-thousand, five-hundred of that are for a six-year lease of ticket riders. So we use ticket riders through, through Tyler Technologies, through, it's called Brazos. And so this would be, I guess this is a cost we're going to have every, every six years. And then nine, we need to increase, basically, we have a line item for the car radios. And we need to increase that by nine thousand for both license fees and for maintenance fees. If there's a, if something breaks, so they can respond and get the, the radios fixed. So one potential increase is we do only have, we do only show six thousand in interest revenue for the Crime Control. And I think we're already over, Kyle, could you look that up for me? Like how much, how much interest revenue have we made in Crime Control in FY24? And it's over twenty thousand. So there's one line item. We could increase the interest, we increased the interest revenue in general. And a lot of that is because we've combined the text book accounts. But we could increase the revenue in Crime Control, because right now it's, it's only at six thousand. And we've earned much more than that in FY24. But, but we didn't adjust, like we adjusted other, we did not adjust the Crime Control Fund. So that's one, that's one place we could just to potentially offset the, the twenty-six-thousand, five-hundred in additional expenses. There's also some, some good news from TCEQ. They approved the WPAP modification for the pond. So we're ever closer into closing out that project. It just means we need to find funding for the re-irrigation work. And I believe there's some other minor work that needs to happen. It's not on the pond itself. Again, it's just, it's, it's in, it's in re, re-irrigation. And we don't have a estimate for what that's going to be at this time. As I discussed way earlier in the presentation, we've got those, the thirty-one thousand of American Rescue Act funds. And we, you know, staff would recommend, and I think the mayor as well, in, in funding a, a trail sign rebranding. So we, we're having our new street signs installed soon that match our new branding. So we want to do the same for our trails and green spaces. And then council member Johnson had, has a proposal for participating in the Adopt a Highway Program. There's a potential for, essentially, it's, it's branding for the city. It would be a adopt, Adopt a Highway Sign with the city's logo on it. You, you pay for that, that sign, but you also pay for that service. So it wouldn't be, we, we wouldn't have to go out and clean up the trash, the trashes, as I understand it.
Yeah, in fact, they, it's called Sponsor a Highway. And it, Adopt a Highway is mostly for farm-to-market, ranch-to-market roads. When they run it on interstates or, or like US two-ninety or MOPAC, they actually don't want volunteers picking up trash on those roads, which makes sense. So they have trained crews that go out and, and clean it up. So it would be a two-mile stretch, I think it is, right on two-ninety, right, right on our front door here. So it's a big old sign with our logo on it saying that we sponsored it, and then it gets all cleaned up. And that is a very dirty stretch of, of highway there.
Yeah, and we, you know, I, I think it's definitely hot funds eligible. When you go to the website, it says, you know, promote your brand. So I think it's clearly a, it's meant to be a promotional expense. So it could definitely be hot fund eligible. So those are just some of the, the bring-back items that, you know, that aren't in the budget that we could potentially put in the budget. There may be other bring-back items, depending on our discussion. But I know that was a lot of information. I did send off the slide deck. So please, if you have any questions, if you need me to over anything.
Yeah. And, and thanks, Matt, for putting that together. I'm sure we'll be referencing that as we, we go forward. The intention of that is really to give us a snapshot of where we are right now. We're estimated to be where the proposed budget is and the key differences between my budget and what Budget and Finance recommended to guide our discussion. What the process is going to be is similar to the last few years or every year we do this is we're going to have council discussion, asking questions of staff, potentially giving direction to staff for additional items that they want to see more details on, potentially bringing additional items to that bring-back list. We used to call it a parking lot, but getting rid of that terminology, we're, it's bring-back items. You know, things that council may want to consider as they're looking at adopting the budget. We all have a public hearing next week, so the public can, you know, they can do that now, of course, but it's intended, it's a formal part of the process, but it's intended to get the public here and ask some questions, giving their prioritizations, giving their feedback on my proposed budget. And then on third, we have targeted for potentially adopting the budget. When you adopt the budget, it's going to include some or all or, you know, a subtraction of these items, you know, that are, that are my proposed budget. Hopefully, council can come to consensus with that. Typically, it's built off of the direction and the conversations that we've had, you know, with staff so that the next meeting will have some more details on these bring-back items or any new items that council has identified. We'll have some more discussions on like the combined CIP project to maybe narrow in on some of the costs that we want to potentially do change orders for. And then, you know, there's hopefully a, a process that we can get to adopting our budget in a timely fashion. And at least if we don't, you know, we have to have additional meetings. We have input from key council members as part of that process as well. So we do have, we have some structure, you know, as part of the agenda item. But I think it's generally, we want to try to, you know, get council discussion on the information that's been received. If we want to focus on specific areas like the org chart and talking about those things. Maybe once we go through a round of questions that council has on the overall presentation and overall budget, then we can start getting into the org chart and talk more about utility rates and talk more about capital projects. Just as a kind of like a precursor to that utility rate discussion, if you go back to that slide, Matt, where we have the, the outline of the utility rate increases or changes. So this is obviously something that council's been discussing for years, you know, and I think we've had some productive discussions internally with this council, talking about potential changes. We've had, you know, outside groups like the TRWA come in and make presentations, recommendations. It, this is not saying that this is, we're initiating a ten-year plan. We obviously, you know, could do that, right? And as part of the, each council has a chance to make adjustments. I would also say that, you know, council can, can weigh each of these items as individually in some sense, right? And say, are we ready to adopt, you know, all the recommended changes? Do we want to do it in, you know, a different fashion, right? So that's why I wanted at least to have this identified as from a, a listing. And I did ask staff, you know, if we could try to have some idea of the prioritization that they're their recommendations are based on. Again, the community assistance, we're, we're trying to move forward that regardless. But, you know, starting at the top, like, kind of the key thing is, you know, changing our, uh, rate structure from that residential class to a meter-based class, you know, trying to get a closer alignment of having, uh, one set of rates, you know, and it's, and it's not class-based, it's meter-based. Um, you know, having a more, and you can go down this list, we can talk about this in more detail, but, you know, what council could choose to do, for example, is say, let's, let's move forward with some of these, not all these, or maybe it's time to move forward with all these after discussion and feedback. What's in my budget right now is what was presented to council at our last discussion for the rate changes, which includes these adjustments. Um, and so that's what's on the website, that's where there's additional detail, that's where we can see the historic rates, um, things like that. But it's just a kind of a precursor to that, that discussion, which we'll get into more details, um, as we go through the rest of our, uh, agenda item. So with that, I'll open up for council. It would be great if we can hear from, um, all council members, you know, in terms of their thoughts, their direction, you know, what we wanna bring back for items. So I'd encourage everybody to speak up and ask questions. We'll start with, uh, first person raising a hand, which is Councilmember Johnson.
Cool, thank you. Um, I guess we'll start with this, since it's on the screen. I, I wanna make sure that all the money that we are going to be collecting on this is kind of just redirected back into utilities. So I, like, we can say, we can say that, but like, how do we, like, ensure that? Because I think residents will rightly see this and then see that we're trying to build more things in the capital improvement plan. And some things aren't just like, you know, needed infrastructure, some things are the backyard, the, uh, Kruger Creek Trails, uplands, and, you know, you see those two things and you might be like, okay, so I gotta pay more for water, but we're also doing these other things. So, uh, I, it might be more messaging, but is there a way to just say, this is going to go towards...
It is for the operation and delivery of water service, our waste water service. So the money is going to basically, collect it stays in those funds. It's not going to be transferred out of the utility enterprise funds into the general funds. Um, it will stay within that fund.
Yeah.
And it may be messaging, like you said, we can definitely make that very clear.
Yeah, and, I mean, there is the, I never nail this down in, in my, like, logic courses, either the contrapositive or the kind of whatever, but like, the, the money that used to go into subsidizing the water did just come from like the general fund. It, it's just like, so, in some ways, they're not wrong, but it's like, the free water was being paid for just with sales tax.
Right.
So, you know, in one way, it's correct, in other ways, it's, we're just trying to, we're trying to make the, the water rates pay for the infrastructure and everything else, just...
Not the infrastructure.
Not the infrastructure.
There's still, although we did greatly reduce the utility operational subsidy this year, and that was due to, um, kind of re-examining some of our expenses, including like what the projected expenses were for things like buying the wholesale water and the wholesale wastewater. So we reduced those expenses, which thereby reduces the subsidy that's needed. In addition, we pulled out, you know, council wanted to expand the water conservation program, which is great, but it's a hundred thousand dollar line item, so that was adding to, in keeping, in having that in the water department, it was, you know, that was adding an expense. So we pulled that back and the customer assistance program of $20,000, so that's $120,000 that's now in the general fund. I mean, general, well, general fund is paying for those community, community programs, let's not inflate the utility fund by using those. But we still have a utility obs- operational subsidy of $400,000. So that is what this increasing rates will slowly bring that down.
Right, and we want to fully fund, but currently we put $200,000, we wanna do $500,000.
We wanna, yeah, continue, yeah.
And we're, we're putting $500,000 in, but we want to...
That's what's in the mayor's budget, is the infrastructure in, yeah.
And I don't think we're ever, uh, there's never gonna be a time where, you know, the residents in the, uh, the, the utility customers of Sunset Valley are gonna be able to fully pay for all the infrastructure improvements.
Right, right. And then there also is always that looming, we're going to have to pay for water rights eventually.
Yes.
And we've heard nothing more on that. That, that is something that, uh, lives rent-free inside my brain, because I feel like it's just going to be like a huge, like, bomb dropped on us at one point.
Well, yeah, and I think, you know, that's, there, that is, that is looming out there, that possibility for us having to secure our own water rights, secure those rights, and then pay also for the treatment of the water to be delivered here. So that's like a, a double layer, you're, yeah. And so I think what the proposal says is kind of set us on the path to make some changes incrementally, so when that drops on us, it, it won't be as impactful.
Yeah, I, I just, to, to have us be successful in this, which I think is a noble endeavor, is, it's the messaging. We, I'll do my best, but when we, when y'all go to do this, uh, about the, it was a million-dollar set aside for water conservation, and then we took a 100 off just to administer or whatever, or come up with idea, whatever, but it was down to, it was like slide two...
Oh, you're talking about the committed funds? Yeah, do you want me to go back to that slide?
Yeah, it's like $873,000, I think. So that would include, I think, the $100,000 in this budget, plus what has been actually spent, which is about $27,000 at this point.
And what was it, was that towards like actual rebates that, okay, cool. No, that's, that's cool.
Yeah.
18-month reserve, I'm a big fan of that. I know, it's, my seat here is to want to spend money and then also to save money. The difference between the mayor's budget and budget and finance, that's, the, the delta there seem larger than in years past, is that?
Yeah, one thing is that the combined CI project was not approved by council until last meeting, so it was not part of the proposed budget at the time, and we didn't know the, the cost really until, so that's the big thing, is $4.2 million is not part of the, the budget. And I think that's, that was something that, you know, we are hoping to drive that cost down through change orders, um, through council discussion, but that was one area. The, um, can you go back to the, the key differences?
Yeah, I was just looking for some analysis on that, like, how I should feel.
Sure, so like this, this Sterns Lane Waterline CI project, we're hoping to have a, a, a cost share, essentially, or agreement with Townbridge, which was what council approved, I think, two years ago.
Yeah.
For their development, but that develop isn't, doesn't seem to be going forward. And so with, the city still has an obligation to provide that service, and so now we are obligated for the full cost of that unless, you know, we can somehow get somebody else to pay for it. So that's put in the budget, because I want to move forward with that project. Townbridge is not gonna move forward with it, with the city in that project.
Yeah, I was wondering how dead something has to be before it is no longer listed as on hold?
They would, they would, well, their permit expired, they would have to come back to council to get a reapproval of that process or that, that permit, and, uh, you know, they had to come back and essentially reapply, and they're gonna give me an indication that they're going to.
Uh, just another way to look at it, Councilmember Johnson, is this slide here is the capital budget. So budget and finance, you know, they were only making recommendations on new projects and of that $1.9 million number. And so they recommended all of those except for $40,000 for the uplands, right? So this 5.3 million in carryover projects are projects already approved, including the 4.2 that was literally just approved. So that was, you know, although we did have money for that in FY '24, it just was not enough. It required more money.
My, there's like the monetary difference, and then there's the, the bullet list of differences.
Yeah, so my, your feedback in terms of like, this, this is larger list, it is larger than previous years. Um, you know, budget and finance, you know, for example, they hadn't seen some of these items because they were not, you know, approved projects at the time, and we weren't, you know, moving forward with them, so that's kind of the first two. The mend is something that budget and finance did not recommend, but I'm recommending because I wanna see additional movement on, to align with our, our rezoning and our open space planning. Um, so this would be a task order, bring back schematic designs for that with some community input. They did not recommend the rate changes for water wastewater or the, um, you know, the re, the meter-based, uh, changes. They did recommend, I think, an actually, a more significant increase to solid waste, to $15 instead of $12. So they actually, there's, that, the solid waste one is, is something they recommended, but they recommended a higher rate than what's in my budget. So they were very much opposed to, or consensus opposed to, the utility rate increases or changes. The salary benefits and compensations, that's based on actuals, so those numbers were a placeholder, um, during the budget finance process, and I think we actually came in maybe a little bit below what the budget number was. So that $150,000 placeholder, we are not using all of that, so that's a, a adjustment that's lower than what budget and finance saw. The FSC, Daisy Dash hot funds, um, you know, those are things that budget finance did not get a chance to see, they didn't, and those were explained by staff. Um, and then the, the fee increase was, we had reduced that this year, um, in anticipation of being able to utilize less services. However, with the change in terms of, um, you know, the fee increase, we just kept it the same as a flat from this current year budget. So budget and finance approved a lower, um, budgeted amount based on a reduction of what we, you know, hours that we were expecting, but the fee increase came after that, that point in budget and finance process. So that's, there's a longer list, but I think it's, it's in line with my priorities certainly, but also just kind of explanation of where things came from.
Okay, I, and I just had one last point, which is, um, as, as far as staffing, and I'm bringing this like right at the last second, I know, but the, the trails and community resource officer, I think that's been a very successful position, and I would just be interested to see, it, it's very versatile as well. I feel like different verticals have been able to utilize that, that position for certain things. Um, I'd just be interested in seeing like how much that would be to bring up to, to full-time. I do not know what that is, I could go find it, I know, but, uh, I'm just interested to see like what impact that would be on the budget to, to stop that, if there's even
One other item I wanna touch on that you talked about, which is the 18-month reserve. One, one thing that I would, that I've asked staff to, um, bring to the budget finance as a work project for this year is the recommendation from the long-range finance, or long-range planning committee, or ad hoc committee, um, to have the budget and finance review, um, the reserve policy, um, both in terms of the general fund, but also our, our other funds, right? Right now, we only have a reserve in the utility fund, we don't have necessary reserves in the other funds, and it may be appropriate for us to do that. And one thing I'd like them to consider is what is the appropriate reserve amount, but also the policies on when to use those reserves, right? We don't have a policy currently, and that was one of the recommendations coming out of that committee. So I would like that to be something that we give to the, the budget finance committee for their recommendation to bring back to council as part of their next year process. Of course, council could say, let's move forward with that right now, um, but that, my recommendation is to send that to the budget finance as part of their process to make a recommendation to council on both the policy, plus also looking at all the funds and seeing what the policy should be for those funds.
Yeah, that, that's, that is almost based more on just like my instinct to just like...
Right, right, like certainly have a protective...
Than it is on what good financial policy would be, so...
Councilmember Brown?
Thank you. I, I have a question on slide 14, capital projects, the carryover bids, the, just to make sure I understand what I think I understand. So the Savannah Trail and ERW Bridge and Street Repair Project's 4.2 million, we approved that at the last council meeting, and I'm assuming the budget includes this full amount at this point, although there's an understanding, or at least a, a sense that that will drop with change orders. So my question is, I guess it's, it, it sounds like to me, or it appears to me, that there's sort of a, some conservity built, conservatives, conservativeness built into the budget, because presumably that number will drop with change orders?
Yes, I mean, partially it's that we awarded the full bid, and so we have, we are obligated right now, contractually, to, you know, have the, the full amount until we may actually formalize the change orders. Even through this process, if we get to a point where we've identified, you know, what we'd be cutting, we may not wanna make any budget adjustments until we actually formalize it, because at that, you know, we, we haven't, we haven't finalized anything until the change order's been accepted and the work's been, you know, estimated. Um, so it's full budget, um, we may be able to save money, right, you know, in terms of those change orders, which in that case, we could take it back to whatever fund, we could transfer it back to the fund it came from, or leave it in the CIP for contingency, you know, for project increases that may come from, like, you know, bids that we haven't received yet for like Brody Mill and Overlay, those projects, you know, where we have a little bit of extra money we can draw from rather than drawing from another fund. But I'll, I'll hand it over to Carolyn, so she's better.
I will just follow that up. So the, the bid amount is 4.2 million dollars, and generally, when we award a bid, we also consider having a 10% contingency on top of the bid amount. So in this case, we're not putting that contingency in there, so those change orders would serve as kind of the contingency for this project.
Mayor Rosengard?
The Lovegrass Water Quality Pond, it mentioned that Phase 2 was yet to be done, but all the gunite work has been done around the tree.
Yes, so the, the, the wall has been replaced, that part is done, so I guess you're looking at really Phase 2B. It hasn't really rained since then for us to test and make sure everything's working, and so if the next step, if that, the, the wall isn't the source of the leaking, then we're gonna put in a, a, a polyliner into the pond. So that's where, that's where that funding would go next, is for the polyliner.
So that should be labeled correctly, okay.
So hopefully, fingers crossed, it rains, we go out there and check it out, and it holds water.
Mayor President?
Um, yeah, I have a couple of questions on, on various items. Um, one, for the Brody Mill, uh, Brody Lane Mill and Overlay, um, how did we arrive at those figures for that, the hazmat traps? Because they're both nice round figures, which make me think they're estimates?
Yes, they're estimates. So I think Brody Mill and Overlay, we estimated, uh, an increase from the Jones Road project, simply, it's technically a little smaller in area, because Jones Road is pretty long, um, but Brody is wider, and because we're gonna be doing traffic at night, um, that's gonna kind of bump up some of that cost right there. Um, so we did make an estimate on that. So absolutely, once we go out for bid, those numbers could be wrong. Similarly, we took the hazmat traps and we looked at the cost of what we cleaned, how much it cost us to clean them five years ago, added on what we are anticipating for the lids to replace. The engineers had put some estimates into, um, into Reimagine Brody for that, and so that's where we kind of rounded out those numbers a little bit with a little bit of extra on there, just to cover hopefully what the cost would be for that project. There are some changes on the hazmat traps that we're looking at to possibly do more like a manhole type entry. One of the other things we're gonna do with that is that two of the traps are in a location where, um, if the city decides to move forward with extending the turn lane from Brody onto ERW or something like that, we're gonna go ahead and anticipate that that could happen at some point, and lower those lids slightly so that they're already ready for that kind of change. So those are, they are estimates, we would have to wait to see once we got bids to, to do that.
Do we think that we're gonna end up incurring additional costs by doing the Mill and Overlay first, and then doing the things that we wanna do as part of Reimagine Brody later?
No, because I think when we looked at the timeline for Reimagine Brody, the first 1A has no impact on the road, and then even in, if we were really kind of looking at any work that's gonna happen, was it gonna be, um, the phase that was over on the east side, really, in that area? So it would be new construction that really wouldn't have as much impact on, um, the road surface itself. So we kind of look at that, by the time we got to that point, it would probably also be time to mill and overlay again. So we think it's a good time to go ahead and do this. There's a couple areas on Brody where we have quite a bit of dips, or, they're not potholes yet, but they're dips.
Yeah, around, around Ernest Robles and some other lists.
On Ernest Robles, and then over by World Market, so, so going ahead and fixing those and getting those repairs done and giving Brody a good face look.
Do we need any kind of approval from either Tech dot or City of Austin to do this work?
Not for, um, I do not believe we need any approval from either one of those, because we're doing this within Sunset Valley proper.
It's not the entirety, it's just Brody Lane up until where the Sunset Valley jurisdiction ends.
Our, our portion of it, okay.
Yes.
And Tech dot just did theirs on 290, so 290's just been done.
Right. Um, one other question I have on this, I've got some other questions too, but I'll yield so other people can ask their questions. I don't understand what 30% design of Phase 1A means for Reimagine Brody.
So that is getting, so, basically, it's kind of getting from that concept, moving into more of a schematic thing. So when you think of an engineering project, you go from, you know, very beginning to 100%. And so this gets you to about that 30% mark of engineering, so it's not, it's not full construction documents, it's not, um, you know, we're not taking bids on this, but it gets you to a point where you have a little bit more information on, then you, you've finished the design process, you would, you would invest in finishing the design process the next year as you go through that. So when we talked about Phase 1A, this one, we're definitely looking at all the easements and things that we would need to acquire, all of the, the additional surveying that would need to be done through that area, um, and just getting to a 30% design phase. And then if the city wants to continue forward, then we do the rest of it in another year.
So, and also, and also working with the consultants... And also, and also working with the consultants to look at areas, it's almost, we're too early in a sense to do value engineering, but to look at, you know, how do we bring, how do we bring the cost of Phase One A down, looking at elements where we can, you know, cut costs, so. And I apologize, council, I should have included that task order in the backup, so I will make sure that that, because MEN does have that task order for the, well, it's, it's slightly under a hundred and six thousand.
Yeah, because we didn't have the, the surveyings on.
Correct, yeah.
We need the survey.
Yeah. So. The city would contract with surveyors directly, rather than having it be a subcontractor of, or other contractors.
So does this imply that if it's going to cost us a hundred and six thousand to do thirty percent of this, it's going to cost us over three hundred thousand to do the, the entire design?
I mean, if you look at the cost of what Phase One A is, I think it was a four million dollar project, was correct, and engineering would be about ten to fifteen percent of a project cost.
Okay. Councilor Rosengard?
I am definitely in favor of an eighteen month reserve, back to what we had previously, since we rely so heavily on sales tax revenue. I would recommend that we get copies of what the Budget and Finance Committee minutes are while we were in budget. That would really help everybody to know the discussion and the final. For instance, that's what I, I did, is I brought, except, brought the minutes with me, but we don't have any draft minutes from July twenty fifth, and that would be helpful to have the last meeting minutes also. One of the, a couple of the items that I want to point out is the committee recommended to set a budget on Phase One A of two point two five million or less prior to a schematic design, and that future phases have a recommended budget cap prior to any schematic design. And then they mentioned on the uplands schematic design, that prior to funding the project in FY twenty five, that council should determine the objective with the uplands, what is the project's overall budget cap, what are the funding sources, and what is current staff bandwidth? I thought that was a great suggestion. Also, on, a motion was made to where any remaining projects on Brody Lane Mill and Overlay, Sterns Lane Water, Waterline, Phase One, City Facilities, upgrades Phase Two, the hazmat, and the City Hall backyard, as we talked about, was a reduction of fifteen percent, and, and then they recommended all of the repair and replacement items, with the exception of the IT bring back, and then we discussed that. So it's, it's helpful to see that, the minutes of the discussion, so if you could bring that back.
Yeah, I'll, I'll make sure that those get, we have a draft, they just haven't been approved, but I'm, but we're posting that agenda most likely Friday, so I can send to council, make sure council has the minutes from, well, they're online, I can send the link, and so all the minutes will be there. But I, but you just, you guys just need the draft of the June twenty fifth.
July twenty fifth.
Sorry, July twenty fifth.
Yeah. And another thing that the committee also mentioned is, the chair actually of the committee recom, said regarding the utility subsidies, she said, and she was summarizing for the, the whole committee, is that they found that a lot of people, there are a group of people that want more parks and more activities in the parks, and there are folks who feel they will never use those parks, so they would prefer to continue to have the utility subsidies as they are. That's their benefit versus having parks that they can't use. Thank you.
Councilor Radickis?
So, let's see, uplands, it's on the screen, so I'll talk about that. The fact that we changed it, first, we have the open space parks plan that shows the recommendations conceptual for that, so that's kind of where we're going. And when we changed the zoning to parks, that opened up the potential for us to apply for grants for that project, but without a schematic design, we really can't apply for grants, because we'd be applying for something that's not identified. We have the money in the account for the Burger Trail that was donated by the PGA, and staff has suggested maybe that be what we use for that schematic design, and I believe we should do that. That is on the uplands. The utility rates, I understand we, we all, I mean, I don't want to pay more, I'm on a fixed income, but at some point, we, we heard the fire department here presenting their contract, and they talk about their costs are based on what it takes for them to cover the cost of providing service. And so that is something as a city, long term, we really should be, as fiduciaries for our city, thinking about, long term, if, you know, we should be covering the cost of providing the service. The city then's responsibility, I believe, is to pay for the, the structure, the infrastructure, to deliver that service. At least, that's the way I see it. A lot of cities use those as enterprise accounts that are income-producing for the cities. So i- if we don't start somewhere, getting to where we're getting close to covering the cost, which is what we did the ten-year plan for, when it comes time that we're going to have to actually charge what it costs, it's going to be a shock. And so if we don't plan on doing it little by little, where it's less painful every year, I think we're going to end up with people really upset when we go to have to, you know, charge what it costs. And water's not getting any cheaper, I don't believe. Anyway, that's my thinking on the, on the, the utility rates, and, and we did a lot of work on that, staff did a tremendous job bringing back a proposal to ease into that over a ten-year period, I think that's reasonable. The other thing I have a big concern about is the position for the communications and engagement. That's a position that we approved as a council, and it's a position that is not funded apparently in this budget, because there, staff's identified a need for administrative assistant. So that doesn't, though, eliminate the need for someone to do communications for our city. And I'm particularly concerned about event, I think this is an opportunity for us to, like, change that job description to be more of a communications and an event coordinator. Over the last eight months before Art Fest, our contractor, our event contractor, Michelle Golden, with Golden and Company, and I met every other week with Matt and the person that was currently in that position, that has been vacated, with the intention that as Michelle worked towards retirement over the next two years, twenty-five, twenty-six, that we could actually transition that knowledge into a staff person that would live with the city, that would continue doing the event. And now that's all gone, so all those meetings and the transition never happened. I don't believe that we actually got the full potential from this position, ever, since it was filled. And we're just now talking about this, I don't know that we'd be having this conversation if the person was still, if the position was still filled. Would we be having this discussion? Would we be saying we want to eliminate this position in favor of doing an admin position? I don't think we would, we'd have to be letting somebody go, or laying them off. But the position is empty, so it gives us an opportunity, I think now, to transit, to do that transition by hiring a, a staff person that could take over that event coordination. And it's not just Art Fest, it's the city branding, it's the community newsletter, it's the Spring Fling, National Night Out. We hired and paid a lot of money to Amper San to redo our branding, and to lay out a plan for us to promote Sunset Valley as, it's good to be here, it's even on the front of, of the job descriptions, it's good to be here, and to create a sense of Sunset Valley as a place, a place that is different from the City of Austin, a unique place, right? That's what we said we wanted to do, maybe we don't want to do that anymore. But I'm really concerned that this position would be just transitioned into an admin position, and that position would be lost. So I, I'm really concerned about that. I think unfortunately, when that position, we created it when the position was filled, we had a city administrator, Sylvia, and Matt was the assistant city administrator. When we filled that position, and that position was already filled while those two were in place, those two positions, well, our city administrator left, Matt became the assistant, or the interim city administrator, and then we made him the city administrator. But we never filled that assistant city administrator position. Meanwhile, the position that we did hire ended up languishing, because we were in all this transition, and Matt was trying to transition court, city secretary, all the things he did as he could step into the admin position, the city administrator. So I, I just really am concerned about, and maybe we don't want to do events, but we canceled, CED canceled the volunteer appreciation, which was going to be a seventy-year celebration of the city, because they didn't have a person to coordinate it. And, and so I think if we really care about creating the sense of place for our city, that we need to change the job description, have it do the events, and all the communications, social media, I mean, is kind of fallen by the wayside, the website updates, all of those things we said we wanted, and that this position never really delivered a hundred percent. I think if we get the right position, and we're very clear about the job description and the tasks, we can really do a major job with this position. That's all I'm saying.
And, and just real quick, in terms of funding, what's in the salary line item right now includes the salary of the, of that, of the previous position, but held flat, right? There was no increase to it. So that, that money's in the salary line item right now, plus the forty thousand dollars from the intern position. I think those two things are what we could use to fund these, either two new position, or not two, the new admin position plus the existing coordinator position, or with, with, you know, there's, there's enough money in there that's without, without, without having to do a more significant salary adjustment, like, so I just make, make sure it's clear that we have.
It's an existing position that we have funded, it's in the budget, and the only difference is, the person that was in that position left the city employment.
Right.
So that position is not a position that as council discussed eliminated.
Right.
But what's been brought to us is that the city does apparently need a position, a new position, which is the administrative assistant. So I just want that to be really clear.
Right. And that there is money right now in that salary line item that is available, which is not currently being used, right? Councilor Johnson?
You know, I don't want to get too far into kind of just like staffing and stuff, but, you know, if they were in meetings for eight, nine months, and then, I mean, I got an email that just said, hey, I'm leaving my last days in two weeks, or ten days, or whatever, I mean, that, I, I don't know how much of that would have transferred, I, I don't think the job, the position ever gained enough inertia, like, if, if any one of these people leaves, I mean, it's, it's so, the position is so almost like well-understood, I mean, there's always like some other things you do outside of your, your core job, but I think I even struggled with, I, I know that Danielle's doing a lot, but, you know, if I.
Maybe.
Well, I, there was a lot going on, it was like almost overwhelming sometimes to me, that, that was my perspective on it, but if you told me, like, if you asked me just like write down what that job description was, I would be hard pressed, I mean, it's just, maybe I need to pay more attention to it, or, like, i- if, if I could be sold on it, then, then sure, but, I mean, it's just one of these things where, I don't know. I, did, did she have an exit interview?
Yes, with myself and the mayor, and that's, I mean, that's, that, that is, you know, tho- those are optional, you know, but, but we offered it, and so, and, but she did have an exit interview with the mayor and myself.
It, it's, a lot of the things that we're in that role are things that we say that we want, and then it's like kind of nice to have somebody like pick up, pick up the ball and run with it, when it's like, we want to have this event, we want to have that event. And so it, I mean, I remember when Sylvia was here before Danielle was, but it was like, she's like cutting table, what was it, tablecloths, and it's like, this is our city administrator, who's just like doing like event planning, but, yeah, it, I think it's a position that we, we, we want, and I think maybe, I don't know, we're always in this position where we're like, we have, we want three jobs, but we can have two head count, and we're trying to like kind of put our foot on, you know, what, what the job description is, I don't know. I know that was, that probably didn't make a lot of sense, but it's just, again, I look at this, this group of people over here, and it's like, I can tell you exactly what everyone, exactly what every person does, and if they left, we'd be very upset, but, you know, I feel like somebody would just like slot right into that, and then they can go, because it's like a familiar position, whereas like, I don't think that position is very always amorphous to me.
I, so I will say that right now, in the proposed staffing organization, the proposed budget, we do, we have a, a big gap, right? We don't have coverage for the things that I think are important to the city, supporting these community events, the community engagement, the business engagement, some of those things might be delegated to other personnel within the city, but, you know, we're, we're going to have, we're going to have a gap in the events, you know, space, like, the city's taking responsibility for Art Fest as, you know, part of its signature event, you know, we don't have that right now. I think the council can consider various ways to approach how we fill those gaps. One of them is focusing on this position and retooling it to be, I think, a more direct and clear ownership of certain, you know, things, like the, the, I think one big gap in that, in that position, in the way the job description read, is it really didn't have an emphasis on the event coordination that's important to the city, and the major events that are important to the city, like Art Fest, which take a significant amount of time, and that's why we have a, you know, production contract for, for that type of activity, because, you know, that's, that's a big position, especially those last leading months up to the, the project. And so we, council needs to consider, and, you know, we, like I said, we have money in our salaries that could be used for, that, that position could be used for potentially the new proposed admin assistant position, but what would we do in the absence of having that coordinator role is unclear, right? You know, we, we have a city that very much built this up on a volunteer basis, we've outgrown that, you know, we need to have staff provide those services, and I think there's a big benefit doing that, especially cross-department coordination. I thought we had a very good meeting with, with the Arts Commission, that Matt and I, and I think we, what, one output of that is that we'd like to revise that job description, and that's going to be coming back to council next week as a proposal for revised job description. Again, there are other alternatives that city, that we could consider, right, which is, you know, reducing the amount of events we want to do, maybe we focus resources in a different way, there's a, you know, turnkey solutions for things that if we wanted to go and look at a, a different production, you know, group that could, you know, put on exclusively Art Fest, we'd lose something with that, you know, in terms of the coherence of the city, that I think that council would, you know, have to weigh heavily, but that's the, you know, that's what we're, the gap right now is that we don't have that covered in the position. I will say for the admin position, I think it's an important position, and I, I think we'll talk about that when we bring up the org chart, you know, as we provide service to the city, one of the things that, you know, is very valuable is somebody who can be the city secretary full-time, and we don't, we have a city secretary, you see also the admin at the front desk, who cannot focus on the city secretary's responsibilities, and we have an intern there, you know, helping out, but it's not, in my opinion, the long-term sustainable solution, especially when we want that person to be integrated with the rest of the city staff, and able to help out on these other projects, like development services, or assisting when other groups within the admin need, need that assistance, especially if we also want to do the records, you know, electronic versions, that's going to take the city secretary quite a bit of time, and so we need to have that, that position be flexible. But we also have a front desk, we have a front desk at Public Works, and I think those are benefits that, you know, that I would like to provide to the city, and that's why I think that, that position's important. That is a, a lower rate position than, you know, it's an hourly position, we're hoping that we can bring in, you know, somebody using those funds that we've got in the, the salary line item. that we've gotten the salary line item. We also would be replacing that need for an administrative intern, you know, so that would be, you know, potentially, you know, not a significant budget increase. But those are things that, you know, Councilmember Medikas is right to point out, we don't have the services in the current proposed budget and we need to consider that, you know, how are we going to provide these services for those areas. So, I know Counselor, you wanted to respond back to Counselor Johnson.
Yeah. That's why I meant when I don't believe we received the full potential from the job description, from the job, that position, because really, when that was all created, it was business development and bringing new businesses into the shopping centers. And we want, you know, it was all this different stuff put into a hodgepodge. And so what I'm proposing and I sent Matt a potential job description that Michelle and I worked on, that's basically from the city research that we did on salary surveys from Bee Caves and Lago Vista, took some of the stuff. They have multiple people in their communications department. You know, they have five and six people in their department. We're just, I just want us to keep one and make that very clear and very specific to what it's for. And it's not all this other stuff that got thrown in there. That it is about the communications, keeping the website up to date, doing the city branded events that I guess if the city council thinks they're important to us or not. But the whole social media presence, it just kind of was hodgepodge. So, and in the meetings, there wasn't a lot of initiative or engagement by the person that was in that position to really learn and take on that role. So we just had the expectation that we were going to get there and we did.
Mayor Prette?
I was just going to say, in kind of support of what Councilmember Medikas was saying, was we're, and this was news to me, the person we've been working with to be our Art Fest event coordinator is going to go away.
Not right away, but I mean, we want to transition.
But eventually. The folks on the Art Commission who have been sustaining our signature event for years and years aren't going to be here forever. So I think it's really important that we fill that position and that, that person in that position's biggest focus is on Art Fest. So that we have continuity carrying that forward. If we really think that's our signature event to represent the city, I don't think outsourcing it is a good idea. One, event coordinators are very expensive. Two, there is no kind of knowledge or, again, continuity in putting on that event. That knowledge and focus has to be in the city, on the staff and in the volunteers. And it's going to have to be eventually a new set of volunteers supporting this. So I think that's, I think it's critical that we fill that. And as you say, focus it on those kinds of things.
Counselor Johnson?
When, when this slide was, was presented, maybe I missed it. So I see four, four items here. Are these four asks or is this like, that $40,000-
These were just talking points. So, talking points. These are, so those two last items are currently, are currently in the budget. We would need that, we would need the, I guess, Art Fest coordinator contract is remaining the same this year. I don't know.
Can I interpret this?
It's all in flux, right? This is all in flux, depending on what we fund, what positions we fund. This is all in flux.
So there was or is a line item for $40,000 for administrative intern?
There is, in the FY, but again, if the admin assistant position gets funded, we would not need that. I just, we kept that line with, with the, with the changes, potential shakeups, we kept that line item in there to have us some money.
Yeah, I kind of read this as-
Maybe the communications person is part-time. However, if they're going to be doing event coordination, then they would-
Yeah, I kind of read this as like, two, two headcount and then $80,000. But I mean, if we're saying that $40,000 that we're currently spending on Art Fest coordination can be put into community engagement coordinator?
Right.
And they are doing other things?
In a year.
That makes it go down a little bit easier.
In one year, potentially?
Yeah.
Yeah, we need to transition here, that's why.
Okay. And then if the $40,000 for administrative intern, you know, it couldn't, could go into-
Fund, exactly. Fund one or two of the, or help fund one or two of the positions. Additionally, to one other point is the Art Fest event coordinator, again, that comes out of the hot funds, it's transferred to general funds. However, if that, you know, goes away and that's absorbed into this potential new position or rebrand of the position, that position, since they work on events, since they work on social media, that position is hot funds eligible.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. And the point I was trying to make, and hopefully Matt, I'm saying this right, but the communications engagement coordinator position, that salary is currently baked into the salary line, right? So-
Yeah, that salary, and again, council, I mean, this is, again, it's different kind of city, you know, council approves the job descriptions. It's not typical of a city. Typical, you know, council doesn't approve job descriptions. So, but the type of city we are, we are, you all approve the job descriptions. The ask from staff and ask from, from myself, the city administrator, is to fund an administrative assistant position as outlined in the council packet. So, you know, the gap, and as we've been discussing, is what do we do with the existing position of the, and job description of the communications and engagement coordinator? Again, I don't think we need it as it currently exists. So there's a potential for updating the job description. Councilmember Medikas has been working on it with our Art Fest event coordinator. So that proposed job descriptions would come back at the next meeting. It is up, again, up to council of how many FTEs in the admin department do you all wish to fund?
Let's do Counselor Rosengarden and then the Mayor Rotem. And I know we have members of the public that wish to also provide some feedback. So when we get through some more council discussion, we'll open that up. Counselor Rosengarden?
Prior, we had a person that was assistant to the administrator or administrative assistant that did both the communications and engagement coordinator and was an administrative assistant, I guess was the title, but did not report to the city secretary, et cetera. So we couldn't find one person to do this job.
They're very different. If you have an event coordinator, how are they supposed to be like out and about, you know, coordinating events? This person would not be a traditional, you know, they'd have to obviously work weekends, attend meetings. But then how do they also work the front desk? The admin assistant literally just works the front desk. They are not, they're not asked to come outside of those, you know, normal hours. They're very, they're very different, different roles.
Yeah. The position before 2020 was not a person who sat at the front desk, but a person who was right-hand to Clay and-
Yeah. That was the assistant city administrator position.
And did-
Which we-
Communications and engagement coordinator because, and yes, that person was out in the retail because I went there with her and talked to managers.
Yes. The assistant, the former job description of the assistant city administrator, although unfortunately, that job, the job description as it was written at the time did not encompass all that that incumbent was doing. But yes, they were doing a lot of the-
We simply need to make the title fit the job, if this is what we're looking for.
But I don't think we're looking for, an assistant city administrator's skillset is not, again, not going to have this event, this heavily event, you know, I think, an assistant city administrator is very different than a communications and specifically event coordination. If they're going to be taking on, if the city is no longer going to be contracting an event coordinator to-
Okay. Next question, because we're talking about these two positions. What about HR?
That's another, that's another topic of discussion. It's not include, there's nothing included in the budget. Staff is still doing some research, but we are planning to bring back a proposal of a potential RFP in October. So that would also be, you know, if we took any action on that, that would have to, that's also something that's not currently in the budget.
So, yeah, but, okay. If we don't have it in the budget, doesn't mean we can't fund it as long as we have reserves. Okay. Thank you.
Mayor Prette?
Two questions here. First one, on this page, do I understand that, are we saying we either need an administrative assistant or we need the administrative intern line item? Is that an either/or or is it both?
If we fund the administrative assistant as presented, as the FTE presented in the packet with the, you know, 22 to 32 an hour salary range, no, we would not need that administrative intern line item. I kept that line item in depending on where the discussion was going to go on a communications, you know, if, I kept that, I just kept, just, it was in, it was in, it was in the budget already, so we just kept it there.
No, I just, I just wanted to make sure that I was clear on that.
The actual FTE that's funded is the CEC, the communications coordinator, as the current salary was in FY '24.
The second thing is, I wanted to comment on utility rates, which is several years ago, council passed a motion to cap utility rates paid out to residential customers at about $500,000 a year. That was never really followed through on, of course. And as we know, utility, that amount of subsidy rose to over a million. That was cut back recently by, by y'all, by about $200,000 or $300,000 when you move some salaries out of that. But it's still well above that 500,000, 500,000 kind of total or target that earlier councils had, which I think is a good target, if nothing else. So I'm in favor of, I think the citizens need to weigh in about what they really want. But I would propose that we, at a minimum, say we want to cap that subsidy that goes to residential at 500,000 or somewhere thereabouts. And this would be a first step towards doing that. Whether or not, we want to completely cut them long-term, I think is something the citizens need to weigh on, something future councils need to decide. But at a minimum, we need to stop the bleeding.
Counselor, go ahead. And my apologies, Mayor and Council, but I noticed a mistake on the capital projects. One other just item, I guess, of housekeeping is if we have got, if you've got questions regarding capital projects, if there's questions you want to ask to the Public Works Director, she will be out at our meeting on the 27th. Clearly, we have a lot of, you know, the personnel type items to discuss at the next meeting. Of course, we can discuss capital projects at the next meeting too, but the Public Works Director will be out. And I think there is some feedback we're wanting to get specifically on the Savannah Trail tonight. But there was a project missing on the, on this page. There's also the city and that were, that was approved by Budget Finance. It was, it was in the budget. And that's the $82,000 general fund, or it's a general fund project, but $82,000 for the public works facilities upgrades. That's adding more covered parking. So that, that project, Budget Finance recommended, it just missed this slide. So that was another new capital project proposed. But that is phase two of some facility upgrades that we've, we've already been working. I just wanted to-
And that work is, we don't have to go out for bid for that, or we will have to go out for bid?
We will probably have to go out for bids for like the awning that we're putting, the covered parking and for the roof. We'll probably have to go out for bids on. We may be able to, we may be able to do the roof kind of just with a, with quotes versus actually an RFP. But we will have to have some bids on that of some sort.
Okay. Counselor, I'm going to go and open up for members of the public to speak and then we can continue our discussion after that. So anybody in the whole room wishes to speak, please step forward to the podium and state your name.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, Melissa Gonzalez, 26 rees. The foolish person who's been following this utility thing for over 15 years or so. I'm going to try to, I have two, two topics that I wanted to discuss. One is personnel related and one is water rate related. So I'm going to try and split my time between the two of them. So I'll start with the water rates because that's where we were. This is a marketing issue as well. And I think that in order to affect good stewardship of our funds and to do our cap at that time, we need to present this effectively to the public so that they understand what we're trying to do. And I just want to, and I'm sorry, I've been on traveling and I didn't see, is it what the T, the TW, whatever, that whatever they recommended, is that what, how we got our five tiers? Or does our five tiers meet Austin? So that's the first question that I have. I think it's a very important question.
No, they, they, there's no defining of the tiers. I think we took some of what was on, we looked at several different tiering structures.
Sure.
And this is the one we kind of settled on.
Okay. Well, let me tell you why I would be in favor of us matching the city of Austin. Because I think it's a lot more defensible. One of the times when, I've been discussing this for so many years, is that when people see how much they're saving from the city of Austin, then it makes it a lot more manageable to say, you're still getting a subsidy. You're still getting a huge subsidy. And so I think that that's a reason to consider using the same subsidy, the same tier structure as the city of Austin. Because then it's real easy to say, if you spent this much money in Austin, this is how much your savings are. So you're still subsidized. And so I think that's an important thing to say. Or if you compare to another small city who has a really high base rate, especially when you look at some of those cities that are getting hit in, I think it's in the Panhandle, with these incredible $1,000 water bills because you had to start paying for things when you tried to get access. This is the kind of contextualization that I think we need to be able to show to people to defend what we're doing. So those are, those are the ways that I just want to suggest that we consider. Because that way, it's very easy to do your analysis if you do your matching. Because a lot of people say, well, why am I spending this? I'm not getting this. Well, then you show, I think Councilmember Reitz was one of the people that was used as a, as a person for this. And you say, this is how much you'd be spending if you were in Austin. So that's the thing I think we should consider. If the TRWA has a structure and they think we should do it that way, then I'm willing to consider that. But because there's other structures that you can show as simple a comparison. It's easier to do with Austin because it's Austin water. But that's my rationale. So, okay. So I'm going to move over into my personnel discussion now. So a lot of support of what Councilmember Medikas said. I disagree with Councilmember Johnson's characterization about that he could look over there and see what those people do. And I'll just tell him because I think it's a difference in our experience. But I know that all the people who I know over there jump hats so much more than people here know. And, and one of the things that the former assistant city administrator said, she said, Melissa, we have to do all the things that you have to do in a big city with less people. And so everybody is always jumping hats. The amount of times that I've watched the Public Works Director run a newsletter or put up the website or do all those sorts of things, because she had the skillset and she was the only available person here to do it. She takes assistant city administrator things, as does the development coordinator, as does, you know, whoever's here. It is not remotely, oh, you can replace that. And I don't think that the person that we had here in the previous position was as interfaced, let's say, as the rest of the staff. And when you have that in a small organization, and I say this as someone who ran a small business for, I don't know, 37 odd years, it, it, everybody does everything. And that's what the situation we are. So when you're saying it's just a new job description, I really disagree about that. So I think we have to write it in the flexibility. The person who was the assistant city administrator at that time, she did event coordination. She grant wrote. She did backup to the city administrator. She did, and the amount of things, she did not get credit for the amount of things that she did. And it filled in the gaps. And so, same thing with Ray Jean, right? So they said the city secretary should only do this. Well, when you saw that Ray Jean ran the entire finance department and was the city secretary and then filled in all the gaps and, you know, essentially cut the, those are the kinds of people that we have been gifted with in this city. So it's been a huge, huge gift. So it is difficult to write a job description for somebody who, to just say, give us your heart. Because honestly, that's what happens when you have these really great people, you know? And that's what happens when you're in a small city. So it's tough. And so you have to find someone else who graces us with the gift of their presence as these people do. But you're not going to, you're not going to solve it with a job description. It's not possible. So I think flexibility is the key. But I agree, that aside with what Councilmember Medikas said, I think there was a lot, personally, I was on council at the time, and I think there was a lot of garbage in the way we were writing job descriptions and our aspirations. And I don't think it was in line with what our city really is. And I think the things that Councilmember Medikas is saying is what is in line. If you shake off all the craziness that we were trying to do at that time, the things that she's talking about are the things that we need to move forward on to be who we are. And I just think people need to sit around and talk about more or less what they want to do in these job descriptions in order to solve that problem. When you look at who's gone, then you see where the holes are, you know? And different people, in the course of my time, gave me different gifts. I had people who loved forums. I had people who, and then I got those gifts. And we have to take the gifts we hear and see what the holes are and then hire for the holes because- for the holes, because that's what you got to do when you got a small business. So thank y'all so much for y'all's thoughts and y'all's gifts. Thank you.
Thank you. So Counsel, well, I would also just, just align with the city administrators' direction that while we have the Public Works Director available, if we have specific questions about the CIP projects, that she can help answer, that'd be a good time to do it. Just to kind of continue focusing our discussion, like I said, if there's specific things that council would like to see brought back in the next meeting, as far as, some of the items that I've heard are, you know, we, we know what the 18-month reserve is, but maybe we list that as a specific bring-back item for council to consider adopting as part of the budget and, and what we'd have to do to do that, because right now I think we're, we would, we may not have the, the full funding available for that, but we could potentially talk about targets of getting there incrementally. I think Councilmember Johnson, you were interested in seeing what the cost would be for a full-time trail and community position? So if we could have that information brought back. Those are, those are two, we know we won't have the HR until further research is done, but that's just no counsel, that's the, that's something that's very important that I want council to consider, and it's going to be a, it'll be a budget adjustment if we do go out for RFP and we bring in an external service. I think it would be beneficial to the city to have a dedicated group for HR management. And, yeah, we've talked a lot about the communication engagement, where we're going to go with that. I don't think we have necessarily a bring-back item, but continue to, to identify those things that you want us to work on or staff to work on, to identify, you know, with additional numbers or additional backup, and we can, we can do that or objectively do that for the next meeting. Hopefully with the new software, it's a lot easier for us to turn around some of these requests, although still just let's be mindful that it is, you know, what we're asking for does take work by staff. So Counsel, other discussion or questions for staff of this, especially around the CIP projects? Councilmember Rose, card?
Yes, I have a note that says that you made the exception of the 4.2 million, but yet I felt that it was in the above. I notice, isn't the 4.2 million included in the above, so it is not an exception? Now, if you go back to the original draft agenda, because that's what I was working on, is the original agenda that we had, that was the budget book, basically. The very first draft that you sent it to us, which shows all the Excel spreadsheets, it shows, I'm trying to find it now.
I think it was a PDF.
Are you talking about the budget itself?
The budget that was filed on, the official budget that was filed?
Yes.
Okay, so you want me to open that document? Or? So this was the, the, this was the budget that was filed, yes?
And so if you go.
Are we talking about CIP?
When you go to the exceptions, it says the mayor's exception is 4.2.
Oh, from the mayor's.
2 million, but if you go back to the numbers, are, isn't the 4.2 million included in those numbers already?
So it's included in the mayor's budget, but it was not included in the budget and finance approved or recommended budget. That was what I was trying to distinguish. So when we're talking about the, if you scroll down, Matt?
I'm sorry.
Keep going. There, the funding, the combined CIP project, I think is what you're talking about?
Yeah.
Right.
Right. I think the distinction I was just trying to make is that Budget Finance did not include that in the recommended budget.
Okay, and you're saying that all these pages are only your numbers, not what Budget and Finance?
This is the filed budget, which is the budget that's brought to council for review. When you guys adopt your budget, you can adopt this budget, or you can adopt a, you know, something that more aligns closely with Budget and Finance recommendations, or you can add items, right, as kind of bring-back items. But this is the, the mayor's proposal. This is, this is me, my gift to you, is saying, here's the budget, and it's, and, you know, staff is, you know.
The mayor's budget.
The mayor's budget, right, and it's my collaboration, you know, from, with, working with staff, since Budget and Finance, you know, has their recommendations, so some of these items are things that, you know, came back outside of that process because of timing. Some of them are my priorities, right, you know, that, you know, override or change what Budget and Finance recommendations are, and they may or may not align with council priorities, of course, and that's where it's now in your hands for deliberation and hopefully adoption of a, of a budget before we get to, on the third, you know, ideally so we have everybody's registered, you know, view on it from a vote, so. But yeah, so use this as your tool, right? It includes all the spreadsheets, it includes all the summary information that we went through on the overview, the exception being that it does not include those bring-back items that Matt listed on the last slide, because those items were, are deltas from the mayor's proposed budget. Those are like the, the list of items for.
Does council want to see on the 27th, like, we can shift the budget sheets around, so we're no longer comparing to the, because right now it's comparing the parent budget, it's comparing Budget and Finance Committee Recommendation as Comparison One versus the mayor's budget. You know, I don't, we may not have enough changes to bring back, you know, eventually on the third, we will see mayor's budget versus council budget, so you'll be able to see what the deltas are.
Do you want to bring up like the example of that in the actual budget?
Yes.
So what Matt was referring to is if you go down to these spreadsheets, we've tried to do a good job of identifying, you know, all the deltas over this entire budget process. So if you look at one of these sheets, for example, the parent budget is just the, the current year budget, the fiscal year '24 budget. Now, Budget and Finance is where we are looking at the committee review, the comparison budget one, and so this is where Budget and Finance made a recommendation for, for their budget, you know, that's brought to me. The mayor's budget is then compared against the committed review, so you can see for the facilities rental revenue, we have the exact same amount, so there is no percent decrease or increase. And so everywhere there's a zero is where my budget aligns with the committee's budget. Where there's a delta, it either falls one of those broad categories of CIP projects or salaried actuals where we've had to change multiple line items, because the salary is not just a single salary line, it's also compensations and health benefits, or it's the up and planning. So use this as, if you're trying to look for specific deltas between Budget and Finance and, and my budget, use this. What Matt is saying is that we could bring back, you know, revisers in the spreadsheet saying, here's what the potential bring-back would look like if we wanted to fund a full-time trail officer, or if we wanted to, you know, have money going into a reserve, you know, where we'd have to fund that from somewhere. So that, you know, it kind of is this historical view here, and you can see that we may not need that committee's line more anymore if we're going to say, let's, let's look at the delta between the mayor and the, and the council budget, essentially. I think is what your, your.
Yeah, and I, I don't know, we can bring back, you know, how much it would, it would cost for that full-time funding. I don't know if we're going to have, I don't know how much more discussion we're going to have tonight, I don't know if we're going to have enough information to bring back the, you know, maybe that's something we wait and bring back on the third, after additional discussion possibly denied on the 27th, then we'll have enough information to bring back the third, and then we'll work off of, you know, the mayor's budget versus the council.
Yeah, I think for, I agree, the 27th, if we have like, if we want to get more details and say what do, what additional funding would it take for funding a full-time trails officer, it's, it's about this much, including compensation and benefits, and we think we could fund that out of general fund, crowd control, et cetera. I think that's the information, the high level we need for the 27th, but on the third, it would be nice to have like a, you know, it, well, it might, it might be nice, but it also may be one of the things, maybe the list is very few, and it's just, you know, we just say, we don't want X and we want this, right? And then we.
Similar to last year.
Similar to last year, right, yeah.
One other piece just to mention is, I mean, is there general consensus to utilize those, you know, we've used 8,000 of it this year for the mosaic, is there general consensus, you know, the American Rescue Plan funds, utilizing those funds for rebranding our, our trail signage? I think that is something the PNE, the Planning and Environmental Committee recommended funding next year, so we've got, you know, we've got committed funds available for that. And then the other is just not to forget about, in committed funds, the, there's about $500,000 for, for parks, open spaces, beautification, that could, it could potentially fund, you know, either Savannah Trail, City Hall backyard, which would again just draw down those committed funds and, as opposed to drawing down from the non-committed funds, which if we're going to shift over to an 18-month reserve, we would like, we wouldn't have to, to look at that.
Yeah, and we, my original intention by doing that was exactly what we're doing, which is creating the Savannah Trail, creating the backyard. So I think it served its purpose, you know, I think what we, what we're doing right now is executing on those projects so that we can use that money, and like you said, it's not, we're not getting money back, we're just moving it out of committed and the way we track it, but that's showing that we are actually executing on these projects, and that's why we saved up that money. So my preference would be just to, you know, take it out of committed, and that way we're not reserving it for something else in the future, because we're trying to build things that we want to, you know, execute on, so.
So speaking about the CIPs, I think that, you know, when we talk about that versus the utility, and I know some people, Councilmember Rosengarten said some people rather have the subsidies rather than the parks and open spaces, but those are one-time CIP projects. Our cost for the infrastructure, for providing the service of, that we provide for utilities is, is never-ending. You know, so we build, you know, we build a park, we do amenities, we build it, and then it's done, we have to maintain it, but the cost of our utilities is, is going to be forever. You know, so it's like, to say, I want this versus that, the utility rates are still going to happen, the prices are still going to go up for the cost of water, water's still going to be, you know, increasingly, you know, a category we're going to have to look at. But once you build the park, you're just, you're just maintaining it. So I think there's a difference there in the long term, in the long term. And then I, I just would, I did submit the potential changes to that position that already exists, just to update to the job description to Matt, and I would hope that that could come back for consideration.
Yeah, that, so the couple of things that, yeah, I would, I think we need to bring that back. What I'd like to see for the 27th, Matt, if we could, is just have, because that slide that we're looking at, you know, it, it's saying this, or it doesn't really say this or this, you know, clearly, but if we can have a summary that says if, what is the salary needed for the admin, what is the salary needed for the retooled or, you know, the, the version, that'll come back for council for consideration for the event communications and event coordinator, and then we almost have like an option that council says, like to Mayor Prette's point, if we don't have the admin, we need to keep the 40,000, so it's not really, you know, there's a trade-off, but it's not as much. So we can get a clear sense of like what additional funding we may need to have, and the acknowledgement that we are going to still need to have an event coordinator that's external to the city this year, because that transfer of knowledge has to happen, right? We don't, we don't have a way of doing that if we don't have that person engaged and, you know, helping out with city events and overlapping with this.
And it's now, I mean, we're, we're doing work on that now.
Right.
For the April event, so it's, it's not like it just happens two months before, it's an eight months worth of.
Yeah, there's, there's coordination going into the, the fall into the spring, and then it picks up.
And then it's intense.
Yeah. And so, I mean, Matt, is that clear, like kind of what, what are we looking for, just so we can see? Because that, what I really want to see is that if we fund, if we fund both positions, how much are we going to have to increase the salary line to do that, like approximately?
Yeah.
And it's just, well, obviously we, we have targets, but, you know, it'd be something that, that says if we didn't need the admin intern.
Like the total cost of, or the salary for the department?
Just the department.
The department.
Yeah, because I don't think it's going to be that big of a delta, so. And then the, your point about the minutes is something else I forgot, so we make sure that council is, you know, has a clear link to the Budget and Finance minutes, so they can go and review that if they wish, as part of their deliberations as well. Has everybody got enough to think on? I really want to thank staff for all the work and that you guys have put into this process. I know the budget is a big lift every year, especially Kyle and Matt, and all the work that you've done recently to put everything together and, and help get the, the budget to its current state. As I mentioned, Counsel, now it's in your hands for deliberation, and if you have specific questions before we do the next posting, which will be on Thursday, please.
Potentially Friday.
Potentially Friday. Please try to get them to, to Matt, so that he can try to include as much, you know, backup as possible for our next meeting. The next meeting will be our public hearing, so please encourage any of your neighbors that are, you know, want to address any of these items to come out and give us their feedback, or to post it on the council page where we, or the budget page that we have set up for this. I guess the council feedback page is where we'd want to have most of that directed, but they can go anywhere.
Yeah.
And, and we'll make sure that we try to collect that as much as possible for council to, to review, and.
We will have an item also on the next agenda, an ordinance canceling the election, so there will be no need for an election. So the incumbents filed, so, and no one else, so.
Yeah, I always appreciate when people are willing to serve the city, so thank you, Councilmember Johnson, thank you, Mayor Prette. It's certainly, having experienced this for a number of years, it's, it's a, it's a lot of work, but it's very rewarding, and I am grateful that I can continue working with staff, you know, looking forward to the, the next two years and working with council over the next two years and benefiting the residents. Counsel, with that, any last parting questions for staff, for myself?
I could also, I, I have not met the, the fellow that's been running our AV, seems to be pretty good. We don't have live streams anymore. I, the last two times I've checked, they don't seem to be like going live, or I don't have that link, so I want to.
From the website or from?
Well, even if you go to our YouTube page and you're like trying to check to see if it's going live.
Yeah, it's really strange, so I was logged into YouTube, she was logged into YouTube, and are you on the, are you on the Wi-Fi?
Oh, I don't know.
Like right now, you're on the Wi-Fi?
It's not even posted.
Univista, do what?
It's not even like live now. I guess I could have brought this up later, I'm sorry.
You, yeah, if you're on the city Wi-Fi, so Univista has some really kind of intense YouTube restrictions, and for some reason.
Just being contacted.
Yeah, so, because like I, to access it, I would, I would have to turn off Wi-Fi just to be on my cellular, to see it, but yeah, like, we, I was looking for it earlier and Melissa showed it to me, I'm like, oh, there it is, it's right there, so.
Okay.
Yeah, but we'll work with them on it, and that's on my to-do list, is to contact Univista and ask them why our YouTube restrictions are, it's intense, so that it's blocking a city council meeting, so, yeah.
All right. Any further discussion? If not, Councilmember Medica?
Let's adjourn.
Second? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'll post a nay. All right, we're adjourned at 8:18 PM.
Yeah, we've got 500 hours of firefighter experience, we can put this in the community and it's.
[laughing]